Good evening, we're feeling up to being at least a big feeling about soon. I'd like to call the work session for November 18th, 2021, the Coffee County Board of Education to order. At this time, Dr. Banks, if you'd please sit in the [inaudible].
Yes, sir, no problem. Let us pray. Dear Father God, thank you for this opportunity tonight. Thank you, Father God, for your love and your kindness towards us. I pray, Father God, in your name, Jesus, that we continue to do things that's pleasing to you. And I ask, Father God, tonight, that we remember all families who have bereaved tonight, suffering with the loss of a loved one. We are thankful tonight, just, Father God, to be here, to be on one accord. And we praise you, we magnify your holy name. We realize, Father God, that we in COVID-19 season once again, we know we've been doing some things for at least almost two years now. But we are thankful and we are grateful because you have sustained us. And I ask, Father God, that we exemplify leadership within our school district that will always keep cultivating love for our children and our personnel members certified and classified. I ask, Father God, tonight, that you will embrace us and allow us to do things that's magnificent as we proceed forward into this school year. Bless our leaders, our superintendent, and our board members, and everyone in their respective places within this school district. We ask you, Father God, that we always have cohesiveness in our mindset, that we would do all things to engage in the love for mankind. And I ask this prayer in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. You came in low energy. Shouldn't have low energy anymore. Nothing. Thank you. Yes, sir. So I need a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
I'll make a question.
Mr. Wade, Mr. Lot, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Mr. Wilbers. Can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, good. All right.
Yeah, it's pretty good and enough.
Got you.
All right. We will begin the meeting with the school update. We have West Green Elementary School here to provide us an update of what's going on at West Green. So welcome. We've got Mr. Alan Chansey, the principal, and you want to introduce your staff who were here?
Yes, good evening. It's great being here, sharing with you guys some of the great things that are happening at West Green Elementary. I brought some of the wonderful ladies with us to help make West Green great. We've got Ms. Heather Lot, our assistant principal, Ms. Deidra Taft, our media specialist, and Ms. Rebecca James, our counselor. So they're going to share some of the things that follow into their umbrella and what they're doing to help make our school greater.
Thank you. November 1st, we began a new after-school program called Girls Who Code. In this country, there are roughly 100,000 computer science jobs that come open every year, but only about 40,000 graduates in the field of computer science. And of those 40,000, only about 19% are girls, and only 2% of those are girls of color. So Girls Who Code is a completely free program. All materials are free, everything is free. It is a book club model, and this is the book that we study. It's called Learn to Code and Change the World. This, too, is also online, so the girls have access to it at home. This is actually a picture I took of our girls. We have 25 students who are currently enrolled in our program, and we meet every Monday from 2:30 to 3:30 in the afternecks. This is the mission of Girls Who Code. Girls Who Code works to inspire, educate, and equip girls with the computing skills needed to pursue 21st century opportunities. And our vision is to reach gender parity in computing and technology sectors. And the way our meetings run is we start every meeting with a sisterhood activity to build community with these girls. There are currently four of us who are serving as facilitators, myself, my parent, Samantha Henry, our fifth-grade math teacher, Ms. Dominique Harper, and one of our pre-K teachers, Ms. Whitney Burge. And so we work with those girls every Monday with this sisterhood activity. Then we have a time to read and reflect on the materials in the book. And then there's a coding challenge, and we meet in our computer lab. And so they're actually using a program called Scratch, which is a free coding program, and they're learning to complete coding projects. And outside of Girls Who Code, we are still doing STEAM activities in our media center. Our kids love Art for Kids Hub. We've done some art lessons through them. The particular picture at the top left is one we did of a hidden surprise Frankenstein with a brain inside. We did a bone bridge challenge where they had Q-tips, pipe cleaners, and popsicle sticks, and they had to build a bone bridge as long and as strong as possible. A cup stacking challenge was a team building activity where they had to stack cups in various configurations using what we call a jellyfish, which is a rubber band and four pieces of yarn. They could not touch the cups with their hands, and the challenges got progressively harder. The last one, they could only use one hand, and they could not speak to each other to do it. In the bottom first two pictures, we celebrated Dot Day the week of September the 15th. Our older students did string art, and our younger students did fake watercolor with markers and coffee filters. We just did a storybook STEM activity with our second-grade class this week where we had read The Twisted Night Before Thanksgiving, where Farmer McNugget is trying to kill or telling the kids he's going to kill a tope and roast all the turkeys, and so they had to create a place to hide a turkey. And then the last one was something we did with fifth grade this week, which is a design thinking game, and it's teaching them the process of design thinking, where they're looking at the actual person or group that's in need, looking at the problem, and then brainstorming and creating a prototype to solve a problem. So each group had a drew a card that had an individual. It could be a unicorn, a principal was one, a magician, all kinds of just different ones. They had to consider the needs of those clientele, and then they had a particular problem. I know one group did, they had drawn a principal, and they had to create something for him to listen to music on. And the particular one that's shown there was they had to create something for an astronaut to lift heavy objects with, and they created two different rovers. So that's what we do in the library.
That's great.
Good evening. I am the school counselor at West Green Elementary, and I wanted to first share about a wonderful gift that we received from one of our community partners that wanted to remain anonymous. So I wanted to respect that, but also share about the exciting things that we're doing with that wonderful gift. We received a sizable gracious donation to our school, and we have so far used that to purchase necessities for students because, as we all know, it's hard to learn when you haven't been able to use soap to take a bath or whenever you're hungry. So we have worked to meet some of those basic needs for our students so that they can be better prepared to learn in the classroom. As you see here, we have an example of what we have kind of gotten together so far. That includes toothpaste, toothbrushes, soap, deodorant, and students are free to come back anytime to pick up what they need. We also offer coats, shoes, and things like that, and then food baskets for students on a designated basis. Another exciting thing that I wanted to share with you guys tonight is what we call Tribe Time. We have a time every month that we call Carrying Adult in the Building, or Tribe Time, where a person or where two different people go into a classroom that is not their home room classroom, and usually they're paired with a parent, a support specialist, someone like that, so that there are two adults in that classroom that are not normally in that classroom. And we use a curriculum called Core Essentials. Core Essentials was developed in 1998, and its main themes, three main themes are treat others right, maximize your potential, and make smart decisions. And from that, they have about 30 character words that they cycle through throughout the year or every three years, and they provide videos and worksheets that the students can do so that they are familiar with that word and can define it, show everybody what it looks like, and explain it to a friend.
And I want to talk to you a little bit about PBIS. About five or six years ago, we became a PBIS system, and all the elementary schools adopted PBIS, which focuses on positive behavior. So at our school, now, we teach the rules, the expectations, the routines for all of the classroom activities, and also for our common areas like the playground, the hallway, the bathroom. And when children follow those rules and routines, then they can earn DDoE points, and they can spend those DDoE points at our PBIS store. But in no way that we're going to focus on positive behaviors, we have something called positive office referrals. So you know, most children think about going to the office, or we think about going to the principal's office, you think, you know, that's bad, you're in trouble. But we want to build a different kind of relationship with our students. We want our students to know that we care about them, we're here for them, we love them, and we want to focus on the positive, all the things that they do well. So a teacher can give a shout out to one of her students, or actually any student. We've had several staff members this year give shout outs to kids that already have been in our class, just saying that those kids are doing really well, something great at. And they can give a shout out to the student, and then they place it in one of our boxes, one of the mixed runners boxes, and then we write a note to the student at the bottom. Then we call the student to our office, and I wish that y'all could see their little faces whenever you read what their teacher says about them because they just lot of, it's one of the most wonderful things that I get to do with the kids because I love to see their little faces, smile, all that. And then they get a pencil that says, "My principal thinks I'm amazing," and they get to go get a choose a prize from the PBIS store, and they also get their picture taken, and they get highlighted on Facebook. So they get a shout out about what they've been doing really well on Facebook, too. Now, I also want to give our No Teacher Boot Camp. You are aware that Ms. Kathleen Payton, our wonderful human resources director, she plans the No Teacher Orientation every summer report for new teachers, and that's her new staff members from the whole county. So we were looking at teacher retention, and we have wonderful teachers at West Green. I want to keep those teachers. So what can we do to help them be successful from the get-go? So one thing we came up with was a No Teacher Boot Camp. So at the No Teacher Boot Camp, we just give teachers tools of how they can be successful at West Green. We talk about instructional expectations, classroom management strategies, procedures for the media center, how do I go about getting services with the counselor, how do I take attendance, how do I use the computer machine, all those little things that we don't think about, you know, that's very important for someone new coming in to know so they feel more comfortable. Because we want all of our teachers to feel like they're part of the family, you know, from the get-go. So we started that, and it's been very successful, and I think that we've had really good results from it.
With that New Teacher Boot Camp, you know, if you can remember back to when you first started education, walking into that very first faculty meeting, how odd that is and not having your relationships. So we try to go ahead and build those relationships as soon as possible. We even try to reach out for hiring them at the teacher job fair in April and May and go ahead and connect them with our staff as quick as possible. That way, they're able to hit the ground running and have a great summer and feel successful about starting the school year. Some other points of pride that we want to share with you real quick. Our students participating in Child Who Cancer Awareness Month. We're able to make a great donation to that organization here in Coffee County. Also, they're dressing up in pink for breast cancer awareness and sharing, being able to make a nice contribution to that organization as well. Our students dressing in orange there for Unity Day. And we've got a couple of pictures there where our students have celebrated Veterans Day and learning about what our veterans mean to us and what they've done. And they're on the very far right, students in fourth grade created rocks to go into our rock garden that represent veterans in the United States. So the points of pride, this is Career Day, so focusing and trying to guide our students in kind of picking out and thinking about what career they might want to be one day. So we've got a paleontologist there, a teacher, one wants to be a football player, and I couldn't leave the last one out because she says she wants to be the boss lady. I thought that'd be a good one to put in there, but it's a good job to have. And then our students, they're far left, several of them in third grade, they're dressed up as the careers they'd like to be. And a few of our students there are pre-K. We've got one who wants to be a CEO already, waitress, and a police officer. So they really enjoy this time, and this is part of our Red Ribbon Week, as our students focus on making smart choices. We're also able to hold a blood drive on September the 11th of this year. It was a great success, we're able to keep that bus full all day long, the staff members and community members being able to donate blood. So that was a great turnout. We were thrilled to be able to have our Trojans back on campus this year. Our students absolutely love that, being able to get out and see them and participate and discuss things with them and just get out and play and get to know them. And I think they enjoy it just as much as coming back and seeing the school and seeing the teachers that are still there and being able to continue those connections. The bottom right, we've got a couple of pictures of students celebrating birthdays as we went into COVID last year, trying to make some changes of not having birthday parties in classrooms and having visitors now. So our staff was able to come up with the idea of us providing those birthday parties. So at the end of each month, we have a cupcake and a juice, and we go down to all the classrooms. We've got kind of a little, I guess you'd call it a sort of a whoop-whoop wagon. And Ms. Sam in the media center, she decorates that up real nice and real pretty, and we go down and celebrate all those kids. Actually, some of these kids that may not ever have anybody show up to the school for them to have a birthday party, they're actually able to celebrate the birthday at the end of each month and be recognized for that. So it's something that really helps our students feel loved and appreciated. Here, this is School Lunch Week, so we were very excited to be able to be nominated as a Tray of the Week finalist there on the nutrition page. We didn't win that week, but it was still a great thing to be nominated and be a part of that. And we had numerous guest servers that week there in the lunchroom. We've got Dr. Lee's there serving, Ms. Dawn Lewis and Ms. Calhoun there serving with us, our Trojan representatives, we're able to come back and serve in the lunchroom, and the Dr. Banks and Chief Elrod there as well, jumping in to help and serve our kids. So that was real thrilling, and our kids love being able to see some new faces and some other folks jumping in and helping provide lunch for them. Then we're also proud to be recognized on the Georgia Department of Early Care and Learning site for our pre-K of Hispanic Heritage Month. In our pre-K class, they were able to have a family that actually brought a real authentic piñata back from Mexico. I'm not real sure because that's exactly what it looked like. I don't know how they were able to fit it in and get the family back, but they brought that back, and we're real excited to share that with us, and we decided to be able to have that and fill it up with candy. And then the kids had lots of different things that were shared with them for them to learn about Hispanic heritage. And we're also going to be, I'm not even going to attempt to call what it is because I'm not 100% sure, but in December, with our Hispanic community, of being able to celebrate Christmas and have those families come in and share some dishes and some things that they do to recognize that are outside of what we normally do and help our students know some other things that are happening in our culture. So that's it. We appreciate you guys and what you do for us at West Green. Our students are very great, our staff is awesome, and we just appreciate all of your support and what you do for us.
Thank you. Great job. And that was a lot of fun serving that day in the cafeteria.
It gives you a different point of view, for sure.
I hadn't had that many hugs.
Hard time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The next item on our agenda is our minutes from our previous meeting. If you want to take a moment and read over those, if we have consent of the board, we'll place those on the consent agenda. Next, on the agenda, we have our financial report, and Ms. Yawn is a little under the weather this evening, and he could not be with us. So we'll walk through these reports, starting with the first, the monthly financial summary. You'll see that our beginning fund equity, 7121, was $22,765,555.80. And our end of month is $20,771,492.45. That's July 1 through October 31st. The next document, our monthly financial comparison. This compares to the previous three years at this time. You can see there where we're at in comparison to last year. The third document is the detailed report. We're on target with our expenditures and our revenues. And then the fourth document is the East Floss summary. And you'll notice that the October revenues are, once again, strong as compared to last Are there any questions about the financials? If it pleases the board, we'll place that on the consent agenda for approval at the regular meeting following this meeting. East Floss schedule. We provide this report each year and advertise for compliance to make sure that we are being transparent with our East Floss as provided by Georgia statute, and so we will run this No board action is required on that. That's information, just so that you're aware that that will be running in the paper. The next item on our agenda is the Westside School Improvement Allocation. Westside has received funding as part of the Title I Part A School Improvement through the Georgia Department of Education, and they will receive $75,000 for school improvement. And Christina, Dr. Tucker, our assistant superintendent who manages these programs, she is at the Cognia or the SACS conference. Her and Ms. Fate and Ms. Moore in our federal programs, they attended the Cognia, which formerly known as SACS, their conference, over the next two days in preparation for our accreditation next year. So they went ahead. So I'm presenting this as information to the board tonight that Westside will be receiving the $75,000 as part of their Title I allocation, as part of Title I Part A School Improvement Property, real estate, as you noted from our previous meetings, we had declared the 17 acres, 17.64 acres in Rockston as surplus property, is no longer needed by the school district. And then at last month's meeting, we announced that we were going to be accepting the sealed bids, and so over the last couple of weeks, we received the sealed bids. They opened, and the high bid was from Alex Morrison, and you'll see that the high bid was $90,846. And I have spoke with Mr. Morrison, and he intends to execute the purchase, and I'm recommending that we go ahead and put this land back on to be tax digested. The school district and the county will earn tax revenue off of the property. But realistically, there's no use for us to ever have to use that 17 acres out in Rockston, and at least it will be earning tax dollars. And there was quite an interest in the property. I was rather pleased with the amount of interest in it. Any questions?
No, I think that's closely, we're going to get our money back for that property. I was actually impressed with it.
Yes, sir.
Does that need, because it's real estate, do we need to do that as a separate thing? Or is it in all the consent agenda?
I've got it here to go on the consent agenda. I think it's fine to go on the consent agenda. It's fine. Audio enhancement. We are going to install the audio enhancement equipment throughout the school district, which is the cameras in every classroom. As we've learned from transportation, those cameras can be very handy, having little buses and such as that, and so this will give us the opportunity to have cameras in all the classrooms. And for a lot of reasons, that will be really valuable to the school district, and so we needed to put some drops in some of these classrooms to be able to put that equipment in. So this is to cover the cost of those drops to go into those classrooms. And this will be paid for out of American Recovery Act money. So we've got federal dollars to be able to pay for this. And then bus purchase. We have worked with Mr. Gilliard, and he has gone through the process to purchase some school buses, and he is asking us to purchase five 87-passenger 2023 Bluebirds for a total cost of $721,135. And we have been approved by the state, the American Recovery Act funding to purchase these buses. So that is approved, and so we're asking the board to approve that bus purchase tonight. Mr. Gilliard, you got anything to add to that?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you being here.
We're still getting allotment for so much every year.
We are.
Yes, sir. I think we get enough for two buses. That's what we got last year.
We got two buses last year. Just spluster.
This is American Recovery Act funding that has already been approved by the State Department. So we included that in our application. All right. Maintenance purchase, once again, is part of our application for the American Recovery Act. We included some heavy cleaning equipment. We've got an opportunity to really upgrade our floor cleaning systems in our buildings. So we made application through the State Department, and it was approved to purchase 12 floor cleaning machines and also 12, they're called KaVAC machines, and these are used to deep clean the restrooms. And so we're going to purchase a floor machine and a KaVAC machine for each school to place in the schools. And once again, that's been approved to use the [inaudible] for that. The next item on the agenda is the board meeting dates. We've developed a calendar with the tentative meeting dates. We're asking the board to review this tonight. We'll come back next month and ask for approval at our December board meeting. I've looked at the dates, I don't see a conflict, but if y'all want to take the next 25 days or whatever it is until our next meeting, look over this, make sure you don't have a major conflict, and ask the board to approve this in December. And that's our business for tonight. I would ask the board for an executive session to discuss personnel and also real estate.
Need a motion to exit to executive session, please?
Yes, sir.
No idea. Mr. Wade, Mr. Lot, second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Wilkerson? All right. I need a motion to exit executive session.
Show me.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.